Six thirty, we're on call the meeting to order of the Board of Education for January twenty first.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Dorr?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Here.
Mr. Runge?
Here.
Number three, pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Rose.
To the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, approval of the agenda, is there any corrections, Mr. Rose?
Uh, new business number one, renewal of transportation contract with West is getting, um, removed. They did not give us a renewal and were told that we need it prior to the next month's board meeting so you'll be able to have it in your packet.
So with that correction, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. On the consent agenda, need to pull out board meeting dated December seventeenth because there was a correction under, I was showing abstained on the ISB services and I voted yes on that, so we're gonna pull that out. And she'll have to redo it to vote, uh, vote on it to approve it with the correction. So with that correction, we're going to approve special board meeting dated December sixteenth. Tri-County regular board meeting dated December eleventh, tri-county bills for January twenty twenty, application then report.
Can I ask a question about the tri-county bills?
We'll have to pull them out.
Don't know if we'll be able to answer them, but.
Okay.
You'll have to pull them out of consent agenda if you're gonna ask questions. It's all, I mean, it's no big deal, but.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
So I approve, or a, a motion to approve the consent agenda with those two items removed.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
No.
No.
I just wanted to know why, yeah, like AJ, their rental is, they get twenty seven fifty and all other districts in the tri-county get twenty five hundred.
Um, I'll have to look into that.
They probably have another classroom.
They probably have like a, a office area or something.
It just says one-room ED and there's other districts listed as having one-room ED. I just wondered why that was different for one district other than the others.
I will look into that and get an email to you, the board.
Moving on to number six, approval of District one eighty-six bills for January twenty twenty, are there any questions?
We need to, yeah, do the tri-county bills, we need to approve those.
Got a motion to approve the tri-county bill.
Some.
Second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carried.
And if you want to state your corrections, we can, we can approve the other minutes, we just need to know what the corrections are.
My only correction was on the ISB, I voted yes instead of abstain.
And I will motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. District one eighty-six bills, I have a number six, are there any questions there?
I had a question, um, in a smaller packet, um, it's the state rooms. Can you, like the cheer state rooms, it's a thousand, and I know there are a lot more football players, but six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars, they were, they stayed two nights. There are a lot more and they stayed two nights.
Yeah, because they went up the night before.
And they have more coaches and staff too.
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, page four, um, MHS cheer, they took a, it was Southwest one, so I assume they were allowed to take a charter to state? Yes. I had a question on the solar panels, the sixty seven, there were sixty seven hundred, I was just curious where they, it didn't say where they were. Um, high school, um.
Ticket booth in Carruthers.
And we got a grant, um, so a check and a bill, so it's a, it's total wash. Yeah, but that was, we paid that last year, um, the portable, the portable at Carruthers has solar panels, it was the same thing. At sixty seven hundred dollar cost, but the, the, there was a grant, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there was, there was some on the top of that ticket booth, yeah.
There is?
You see the new, the new format, um, our new accounting system is up. Um, we still have a few glitches here and there, I tried to run, um, uh, financial reports and, um, we still had a couple of little glitches. So, um, hopefully the, the next, uh, financial reports we'll be able to run. Um, we had a, a variance between our bank balance and SDS and STI. We were balanced and I got ready to run the reports and we weren't, so, um, still working out a few bugs and we'll be ready to run for February.
Number three, uh, need a motion to approve District one eighty-six bills as presented.
So moved.
In a second?
Second. Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Runge?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number seven, communication.
Mr. Grotty, Mr. Keener and Mr. Stroud, after much thought, I've decided that it is time for me to resign my position as middle school softball coach. I've put my heart and soul into this job and it is very difficult decision for me to give it up. But my daughters will both be playing high school volleyball next school, school year and I do not want to miss out on the opportunity to be able to follow them in their season. And I know I can never get those years back. I will continue to coach with the high school softball team and if I can assist the new coaches at the middle school level, I will be happy to do so. Thank you for all your support you've given me in my time in this position, very respectfully, Coach Kim Cook.
Recommendations to approve her resignation?
Recommendation, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Navara, good afternoon. I've talked to Coach Winters earlier in the week and I informed him that I would not be able to be as involved with the baseball program this spring as I was in the past year. Unfortunately, due to class times with the education program at SIU this semester, I am stuck with two night courses a week. One on Mondays and the other being on Thursdays. This hinders my ability and my availability to help coach the kids within the program. I talked with Coach Winters briefly about still helping with the program when needed on a volunteer basis if able. And I, and also on the possibility of being a more reliable resource in the future once I am no longer in school. I wanted to email you personally to thank you for the opportunity you gave me in both the spring of eighteen and nineteen to be involved in this program that I truly care about. There is a big difference between playing for this program and coaching for it and I want nothing more than for it to succeed in the years to come. Again, thank you, Nathan Hinkle.
Uh, recommendations to approve his resignation?
I have a recommendation, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
Dear Mr. Navara, please accept this letter of recognition from my resignation from my position as an assistant coach for football. I received an offer from Carbondale High School that I will be taking coming this fall. It has been my pleasure being a student and a coach at Murphysboro High School and that it is all thanks in part to people such as yourself. The main reason I'm leaving is because I do not know if I want to coach in the future and Carbondale has given me an opportunity to call plays at the JV level. Not knowing if I want to coach in the future, I feel that this is the best way for me to really fill out coaching right now. Mr. Navara, I would like to thank you again for everything you have done for me from being a student to a coach and for giving me the opportunity to be a part of the historical season this year. Sincerely, Clay Rendell.
Recommendation is to approve his resignation?
Motion approved, I have a, motion to approve the administration's recommendation.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carried.
Dear Mr. Grotty and the Board of Education, due to personal reasons and the weight of my current position as social worker, I am writing this letter of resignation to inform you that I am unable to coach the seventh grade volleyball for Murphysboro Middle School this season. It saddens me to have to let this position go, although I was really looking forward to it. I realize that at this time it would not be able to give all my time and energy that would be required for this position. With thoughts to stay in the area longer than anticipated, please keep me in mind for future considerations. Thank you so much for your opportunity, sincerely, Alyssa Sturgeon.
Recommendations to approve the resignation?
I have a recommendation from the administration, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter to inform you that I recently gave birth to baby Bunzel Meyer on December first, two thousand nineteen. My original due date was January twenty-second, twenty twenty. However, due to pregnancy complications, I had her early at thirty-two weeks. That put me at having to go on maternity leave early. I had originally been approved to take eight weeks of maternity leave starting January the thirteenth through March the sixth. Now that she came at thirty-two weeks, I went on maternity leave December the second. And eight weeks would put me at returning to work January the twenty-seventh. Baby Bunzel Meyer had to spend twenty days in the NICU at Carbondale Hospital. She was able to come home on December the twentieth. I would like to extend my maternity leave to have a little more time with her. I would return to work February the eleventh, twenty twenty. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns, thank you for your support during this exciting time for my family.
Recommendation is to, uh, extend her leave.
Uh, recommendation from the administration to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Grotty and Board of Education, I write this letter to announce my retirement at the end of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. I would like to thank you for all the great opportunities you've given me as an employee while working at Murphysboro School District one eighty-six. I've enjoyed working with and learning from my colleagues, I will miss the valued friendships I have made while working here, sincerely, Beth Collins.
And, uh, administration recommends the approval of her, uh, retirement.
I have a motion, a recommendation from the administration, do I have a motion to approve?
Salute.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
Dear Mr. Navara, I am resigning from the position of the assistant cross-country coach due to conflicting family commitments that will start this summer, sincerely, Kristen Raymond.
The, uh, recommendation is to approve her resignation?
Recommendation from the administration, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Moving on to number eight, fishbowl items, I think we have a few.
Start. Have a graph from Carruthers. The blue indicates the, um, ODR's Office Disciplinary Referral, um, for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and the red is for twenty nineteen, twenty in the same months. This year we have seen a drastic drop in ODR write-ups, we are attributing this drop to our PBIS and trauma-informed practices. This year we received silver implementation status from the Midwest PBIS organization. Staff members are more consistent with PBIS implementation, our teachers are increasing their connection with students. On Mondays, we are implementing team huddle, this is a time for teachers to have meaningful, social, emotional conversations with their students. During our know me, know my name activity, ninety-nine percent of our students who took the survey had made at least one connection with a staff member. I assume this is from Mr. Todd? Yes.
Mrs. Burgess.
Mrs. Burgess, okay, didn't see you.
Mrs. Burgess sent that to me last month and I didn't get the, uh, notification and so it wasn't read last month, it's been read this month.
Great job.
I have one, uh, from Becky Nelson at Carruthers. Uh, Carruthers Elementary School had a special assembly from the NED, Ned Mindset Mission. The, this assembly focused on teaching our students how to activate their growth mindset to overcome social, emotional and academic challenges. The students are still talking about this engaging assembly and encouraging one another to have a growth mindset. By far, this is one of the best assemblies my students have participated in this thus far. This was such a needed boost for our students, uh, before they went home to emotional challenges and before the start of the new year as they face academic challenges. Thank you.
This is also from Becky Nelson, uh, Shannon Gardner from fourth grade at Carruthers Elementary School was awarded a five hundred dollar grant from Egyptian Electric Cooperative to purchase STEM kits for her classroom. We are excited to see her students greatly benefit from her hard work and initiative.
Lot of good news from Carruthers.
Very well, very good. Moving on to number nine, Freedom of Information Act required.
There were none.
Oh, no. Number ten, recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time and agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy two point two three oh, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is a time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Are there any public concerns? Moving on, are there any employee concerns? And thank you all for coming. Under old business number one, approval of maintenance grant.
Yeah, um, we talked about this last month, the General Johnny Logan cooling towers, Hush Hushay estimates the replacement of the cooling towers to cost around three hundred fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars would be funded through the maintenance grants, the remaining would be taken from our health, life, safety funds. Um, admin, administration recommends that we would approve this project.
Any questions?
Mr. Seifert is here to answer any questions.
Any question, I'll entertain a motion to approve the maintenance grant as presented.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, Mr. Heine, will you call it?
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Runge?
Yes.
Moving on to number two, District Financial Update.
Yeah, there's been no changes, um, we're still watching the legislature regarding pension shifts and property taxes that are possibly coming, but. Information was, nothing else.
Moving on to number three, approval of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty seniority list.
We had one change, we had inadvertently left Ann Carrington, who's the librarian at Carruthers, off of the original. She has been added, that was the only change made, administration recommends that we approve the seniority lists.
Entertain a motion to approve the seniority list as presented, would that change?
Salute.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Number four, approval of press policy updates, number one oh two.
This is the second reading, um, no one's contacted me regarding any questions or concerns, so I recommend we approve them as presented.
Recommendation from the administration, I have a motion to approve press policy updates, number one oh two.
So the things that were the questions, they'll just go to the default on all of them?
Not on all of them, I believe, i- i- if memory serves, the, um, specifically the, uh, the one on the, um, what's it called, not twenty-four-seven, but the on-call.
Yes.
We're gonna leave that portion out, leave the on-call verbiage out, um. I think that was one of the only ones that, was the only deviance.
Is that five fif- no, five fifty? The cigarette, tobacco, tobacco and cannabis, is that the one that was on the on-call? Yeah.
Um, yeah, it, it, I don't know, I don't have it in front of me right now, it was, um, the one where it talks about, you know, administration being on-call and whether or not they can.
Okay, so do we, do we come back to that after you hear back or how does that?
No, the lawyers have said that the, leaving out the on-call is their recommendation.
Okay.
They did state that, uh, the differentiation between twenty-four-seven employee, which is administration, and being on-call, but it's one that you don't want to have to fight.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the press update?
Uh, have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Item number five hundred, old business is the Carruthers School Improvement Plan.
Curriculum Council approved, uh, the Carruthers School Improvement Plan this month, um. Illinois Empower knows that it was delayed due to, uh, a technicality and so that's not an issue, we'll just put in a new date. Uh, so administration recommends its approval, but it's gone through the, the teams, it's gone through the curriculum council. And so the process has been, it's been vetted and so the recommendation is to approve it.
Recommendation approved, Carruthers School Improvement Plan, do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question, the one that you gave us tonight only has two goals, all the rest had three and last month's Carruthers one had three. So is there only two goals this time?
So when I talked to Mr. Grotty, uh, one of those was overlapped with the previous goals and I talked to Mr. Grotty to ask if two goals were sufficient and he corrected, he corrected it was.
And the motion is approved?
So we just got it tonight. I mean, you want me to read it?
Second. And I have the first, oh, I didn't hear you, I can't hear over here. Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carried. New business, number two, which is now number one, Board Policy seven point four oh.
Yeah, we have co-op agreements with other schools, uh, El Dorado and football being the most noted. Uh, we follow the procedures from the governing body, in that case it's IHSA. Illinois Clay Targets brought to me, um, the possibility of a student from Heron. Their governing body has a form that gets filled out, they do it by student by student, as long as the other building signs off and we sign off, the student can come in, it's a grandchild of one of our coaches. Um, there is another grandparent, I believe, that has a student, as I was looking through to make sure that we're following the policies, following the rules, making sure that this is the recommendation. Uh, Board Policy seven four oh was brought to my attention and basically what it is is there is a small little section in there that says, um, non-public students, regardless of whether they attend a district school part-time, will not be allowed to participate in extracurricular activities. So our non-public school students aren't allowed to participate in extracurricular activities and I think that's, that's, from what I can find, linked with IHSA. IHSA doesn't allow them to be involved. Um, the Clay Targets doesn't care. The situation I have here is, you know, if we go just by the governing bodies and by our policies, a person from Heron, who lives in Heron and has grandparents here, could attend and be part of our Clay Target League. But a family that lives here and goes to Emmanuel or Saint Andrews or even Trinity, wouldn't be able to participate in our Clay Target League. And I, I don't, I don't know if that's what the intent of that policy is for. And so this is kind of a discussion point and, and what I, what I think it should read is, um, extracurricular activities, non-public students would, uh, I don't know exactly how we would word it, but we would want it to be where the governing body dictates whether or not non-public schools could be in, students could be involved in our extracurricular activities. So for most of our activities that are governed by our normal organizations, they wouldn't be able to participate, but if the co-ops like IHSA or the Southern Illinois Junior High, I don't see why we wouldn't want the non-publics to be involved. Currently, as we've looked at this, the only, um, really non-public involvement of students in our activities have been in the drama. We have them in band and we have them in, uh, the drama, but all the drama students that were involved in the middle school drama were from the, um, they come over and they do choir with us and so they're.
Which is academic.
It's a co-curricular and so it's not an extracurricular.
Right.
So right now we have no non-public students involved in any of our extracurriculars. Looking at the, the Illinois Clay Target League, we do have an individual, we might have a Heron student that wants to co-op with us. And I'm fine with that, as far, you know, as far as Heron signs off on it, we sign off on it, we have this league, they don't have a league. Uh, the rules are pretty clear that if the school gets a league or has a league, they can't co-op with us. So like a student that's at Tri-Tow, because they've got a Clay Target League, they wouldn't be able to join ours. You know, it's a case-by-case situation, the real question that comes is more on the, um, the non-public students. Do we want to keep them out of our extracurriculars and why?
Are there other schools in the area that have thrown that, that rule out? Because I assume that's due to insurance and due to, um, all the other rules that they would have to follow to be involved in those extracurriculars.
I think what it comes, as, as far as when I've looked into IHSA, their issue is, is they don't feel like the, um, the accountability is as controlled in a non-public. Because when you do non-public, you're doing the parochials or you're doing homeschools.
I think IHSA too discourages that because it lends to recruiting also, if you got a homeschooler.
It, it's also though, I mean, if a kid's not being able to make grades and so he's not being able to participate in football,
It's part of it too.
the parent can take him, homeschool him, because he's making grades now, he can participate in football, which.
And other activities, there would be grade requirements too, right?
Right, for all of our extracurriculars.
How would you, how would you?
The same way we would do it with Heron, we'd have to contact them and see if they're making grades, so it'd be a.
But the criteria is different from public school to parochial school, they don't have the services in parochial school that private, or that public schools do, they're not under the same testing guidelines.
Yeah, I, I just, I wanted to be clear that we understood why, I'm fine with the, with the policy staying exactly the way it is. I mean, you've really got three options, you keep it the way it is and a student from Heron can come over and be part of the Illinois Clay Target League. That'd be the only thing that they could come over and be part of, because that's what the governing body allows. The non-publics couldn't, um, the other option is, is you change it so that non-public students could be possibly involved in the Illinois Clay Target League. Or you, um, don't allow any co-ops at all.
Well, these board policies all come from press policy that all have case law and all of that associated with it. So did you look at what that press policy case law states and why it states, what it states?
No, nor have I run it by the legal. I've just kind of looked at, um, the procedures and trying to understand it from that side, but I can look into that.
And when you say governing body, you mean the governing body of each of the sports or?
Yeah, so like in this case, what we've got is, we are part of IHSA and so IHSA would be the governing body for all of the sports. It's also the governing body for our clubs like band, magical, um, the fishing team is a, is a, a club, it's not considered a sport. The only other entity that we have is the Illinois Clay Target that's got its own governing body. I can't think of another group that wouldn't and so it comes down to that, it's just, I, I know that there's a situation coming and a non-public student, uh, may want to be part of the Clay Target League, but right now our policy would say no. And if that's because they're just, they're, non-publics are different than public schools, I'm fine with that, but I can look into the legal aspects of it. So at this point, I'll bring this back and get you more information next month.
Is there, I mean, you guys there, we get it from the legal next month, you guys aren't starting yet, right?
No, registration starts next month, February third, but we actually don't start till March twenty eighth.
March twenty eighth.
Yeah, okay. So, well, there was an informational anyway, so we'll wait till next week. Moving on to number three is approval of the resolutions abating the taxes. Here to forward levy for the year two thousand nineteen to pay debt service on general obligation school bonds. Series two thousand seventeen, general obligation school bonds, series two thousand nineteen in the district.
And these are the bonds that were sold with the express. And these are the bonds that were sold with the express intent to fund with county facility sales tax or alternate revenue bonds. Administration recommends that we abate the property, uh, taxes with the county facility sales tax so that this can happen. I know the word abatement is in there, it is just a technicality, cause they put them on the property taxes regardless, so...
And the reason they do that is if the sales tax revenue stream wasn't there to repay the bonds, that we would have a, a payment source from property taxes, but we definitely have the, the revenue stream able to pay that, so that was the intent, um, to use the county facility sales tax. So it's, we do have to, we rolled those together, our, um, legal, um, put those two, the two bonds, the nineteen and the seventeen together, so we can do that as one motion.
Any questions?
And how, is this the final year for that, or how, how long do these?
As long as we have the bonds, so we'll be doing this every year for a long time.
Every year, as long as that sales tax, okay.
Yeah, as long as the, as long as we still have these two bonds, um, and are using the county facility sales tax as the revenue source to repay those bonds, then we'll have to do this, uh, abatement each year.
So then last year, these were separated?
No, we only had the one, we hadn't sold the nineteen bonds yet.
Okay.
So we, we had two different, you know, we had, we have two agenda items this year, we did as well last year, but we only had the one, the two thousand seventeen bond.
We had the auditorium bond.
The next, the next agenda item is the, are the ones that we, the bonds that we sold prior to the county facility sales tax, and so...
Sold the nineteen bond in the spring after we already did the abatement for the eighteen taxes.
Okay, so this is the seventeen nineteen, and the next one is, okay.
Yeah.
Entertain a motion to approve the abatement of the bonds for seventeen and nineteen.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mister Brown?
Yes.
Mister Green? Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mister Beavers?
Yes.
Doctor Dorr?
Yes.
Mister Rungy?
Yes.
Moving on to number four, is Approval of Resolution Transferring Funds from the School Facilities Occupation Tax Fund. Uh, CSD one eighty-six Jackson County, Illinois, to the Bond and Interest Fund of said school district, and abating the taxes. Herefore levied for the year two thousand nineteen to pay debt services, debt service on the taxable general obligation limited school bond, series two thousand nine, A of the district.
Now, this is the bond we sold prior to having the county facility sales tax, uh, revenue. Thus, we sold the bonds knowing that the property taxes would fund these costs. However, with the county facility sales tax, um, we did pass it with the promise that it could be used to abate these costs. Now, we made clear that no future boards are held past boards' promises, but, um, based on that, the recommendation is that we abate these taxes as well.
Questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Transferring Funds is presented.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mister Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
No.
Mister Beavers?
Yes.
Doctor Dorr?
No.
Mister Green? Mister Rungy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number five, Student Parent Handbook for Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty-One.
This is the first reading, it's on display, uh, please read through it and, um, contact me with questions, concerns, comments.
Are there any major changes that we should be aware of?
Nothing that pops to mind, no server.
Number six, Building Management Plans for Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty-One.
Same situation, this is, uh, your first reading, you've got a month to read them. Any questions, comments, or concerns, please let me know. Again, nothing jumps to mind as far as monumental changes.
And number seven, School Calendar for Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty-One.
I need two volunteers to meet with the association to discuss next year's calendars. I will sit here patiently while you all discuss.
I'll do it, I've done it the last two.
Got a net?
One more.
The real reason that Rick and Shannon aren't here today.
They can still volunteer on the phone.
All right, I'll do it.
Oh, wow. Was that Shannon Green or was that Rick Rungy?
That was Rick.
Which one was that?
Rick.
Was it?
I thought it was, oh.
Who was it, Rick, Mister Rungy?
It was, it was Rick.
Okay. And I guess I should've stated that at the ad go, Mister Rungy, Miss, Mister Green are on the phone because they're out of town for work, and according to Board Policy, they can call in if it's work-related, so that's why they're on the phone, I should've said that at the beginning.
I will, uh, email the association and tell them we have our committee. Set a date.
Number eight, Set Class of Twenty Twenty Graduation and Baccalaureate Dates and Times.
The administration recommends, uh, May twenty-third for graduation at seven PM and May twenty-third, eleven AM for the baccalaureate. Knock on wood, no snow days, this would be very, very good as far as the last day of school would be the twenty-second, and graduation would be the twenty-third, so no snow dances out there, people.
You wanna get out of school, you don't wanna go later.
But even if there were a few snow days, that's not going to affect the date of graduation.
What would happen is, our seniors would have to take final exams at a different, at an earlier time than our underclassmen.
Graduation must still be the same.
It's not ideal.
It's happened before.
It's happened before.
It's something we're trying to get away from.
Correct.
Do we have time for the twenty-third?
Seven PM. And we do it at seven PM, I, I know that there's been a lot of talk about possibly doing it earlier, but really, we've got some kids that'll be probably qualifying for the state track, and that's why we try and do it later, cause they have a better chance to come back. Correct.
Yeah, it's in Charleston, it's usually done around three-thirty to four, so it gives them time to rush back and get back in time.
And a recommendation for graduation, do I have a motion to approve?
Summon.
And a second?
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Moving on to number nine, School Wellness Plan, enclosure number two.
This is the, uh, first reading for the Building Wellness Plans, um, it's gonna be an action item for next month. Georgia worked with the administration, she's getting this together for our audit, and are we getting the, uh, state audit coming in?
It's surprise.
No date yet.
No dates set yet, but we need to have these things approved, so we've got the documents, thank you Georgia, and the administration, and we'll put it on next month. Please review, and if you've got questions, concerns, you can hold to me.
And the news today about these potentially changing these guidelines.
Wellness?
Yeah, the, the nutrition guidelines.
We've been in meetings all day or not.
Actually, it's been letting rid of everything, but it's put in place.
Yeah, and, um, so, serve life healthy food.
This has been discussed since day one of Trump coming in, and all that's been done to date are they loosened up just a few of the restrictions that were impossible to be met. The other guidelines have to be approved by the USDA to make these changes, which is very doubtful, that they're going to change everything. You know, they may loosen them up a little more, but it's, it's very doubtful that it's really changed to where it goes backwards to ten, fifteen years ago.
I'd like to just get to a point where we can maybe have ketchup packets again, cause of the calorie counts.
Well, you can have ketchup packets, I just have to tell you how many you can have.
Just, just, I just can't count it as a vegetable.
Thank you.
We have a need for a closed session, who wants to read?
I might, I motion we go into closed session pursuant to Section Two of the Open Meetings Act. Illinois compiles statutes to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity.
Have a second?
Second.
Mister Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mister Beavers?
Doctor Dorr? Yes.
Mister Green? Mister Green?
We may have lost them.
Oh, there you go. Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mister Rungy?
Yes.